Okay, thank you. All right, we'll call the meeting to order. We know the few items on the agenda. The first item is, anyone here for public comment? Okay. Next, we have to approve the November twenty twenty four meeting. Do you have a motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
A motion to approve the December twenty twenty four minutes.
I'll move to second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have a presentation from Rebecca about the current housing analysis that the county did, that she did. And they're logging on. Just another minute. I hope.
Can you click join that blue square that says join up there?
Turn your speakers up. There we go. It's hoping that was just.
Yeah.
Okay, Rebecca, can, oh.
There she is.
We are good. Hey.
Oh, okay.
Can, so can we?
I'm in the committee commission meeting, so it's all.
Okay, um.
It's gone up a couple degrees.
I can hear you, but from the laptop.
It probably is, and what I'm trying to do is to get the, uh, get to a point that I understand what it is. You know, because it may happen again sometime, and what kinds of things should I be doing to prevent it?
Should that do it?
Well, I don't know, can I hear her? Well, let's hear her voice.
I can hear you.
Yeah, I, I think so, 'cause I, I really can't too much from here at this point. Okay.
Can you shut the speaker?
Okay. Yep, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
Does anyone have a portable speaker?
And how do I? Um, do you know how I can make her shareable?
Press enter. Every click.
I think if the three tabs.
Oh, make a percentage.
There you go. Found it.
Okay, that works.
Do they need speakers?
Yeah, do you have a speaker?
I got to put off the policy.
Start it, so it brings up the speaker. Okay. Maybe, can you spin the laptop?
Yeah, I'm not even sure where the speakers are on this. What did I just do?
No, it's good.
She's just filling up her presentation.
Oh, okay, great.
That's right, yeah, that's good.
Are you able to see my presentation?
Yes, yeah.
Great.
But there's no way that'll hear it?
No, not at all.
All right, so all right. Give us a couple minutes, he's gonna get some speakers.
Thank you for your patience, Rebecca.
Don't worry, I apologize that I can't be in person.
Is there a pause for that, or? Can you point one towards this?
I should reach. There you go.
All right, let's see if we can hear you.
How about now? Stop saying one, two, three.
Set such as loud as.
Isn't there an aisle on the front of the speaker?
That's all.
No, there we go. I gotcha, I gotcha.
Okay, we're good. All right.
Great.
There we go.
Thank you, Rebecca, the floor is yours.
Whenever you're ready, Rebecca.
Okay, wonderful. Thanks, everyone. You can see my presentation, right?
Yes.
And it's cha- just, I just wanna make, it's changing, right?
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right. Hi, everyone. I, I apologize that I couldn't be there tonight. I, I live in Hamburg and my children's daycare was canceled today and bit dicey on the roads to get there, so I apologize. Thanks for having me. I'm Rebecca Werster. For those of you that don't know me, I'm the Planning Coordinator for the county's Department of Planning and Development as well as for the Partnership for Economic Growth. So tonight, we're gonna be talking about our Chautauqua County Housing Market Assessment and Development Strategy. A little bit about that before I start. You know, it comes down to, why did we think it was a good idea to move forward with a countywide strategy? Through the Partnership for Economic Growth, we have a couple different workgroups, and one of those workgroups is associated with housing. And we have a lot of different stakeholders from the housing world involved in that workgroup. And ultimately, we were looking for a guiding document to kind of prioritize some projects that we could be working towards in the housing world. And on the other side of things, with my county hat, we had been talking with a lot of municipalities about developers coming into their community, housing developers specifically, and asking, do you have a housing market study when they're thinking about doing a housing project? And the answer was always no. So we found that there was a gap there and that there was a need to do kind of a countywide comprehensive housing strategy to really prioritize projects that we could be slowly going after to improve housing in Chautauqua County, but also have that document available to developers when they're coming in and wanting to better understand our market. So today, I'll talk about that process, the goals and strategies involved in, in where we got, um, so where we got the goals and strategies through our process, implementation of the action items that we identified, and then I'll take questions and answers. So kind of a general process, we put aside some funding through the Partnership for Economic Growth and developed a scope of work and went out for the typical RFP to developers, or to consultants to work on this strategy, and, and we hired MRB Group in twenty twenty three. Part of that process included a big data collection piece, which includes existing conditions, market analysis of our housing, a needs assessment, what does it look like in the future, what kind of housing do we need in, in Chautauqua County? Engagements, you know, we wanted to understand from a different viewpoint, mayors and supervisors' views on housing in their municipalities. We wanted to talk to code enforcement officers, other housing stakeholders in the county. Then we identified goal areas, four specifically that I'll get into, strategies, over eighty action items, and then ultimately develop this report. So our market area, you know, we wanted to look at Chautauqua County as a whole and how that compared to New York State and the housing, uh, kind of data related to New York State. But we also wanted to dive into our urban areas, the city of Dunkirk and city of Jamestown, to pull out that data. I, I wish we could do all four V two municipalities, but ultimately, I would have had to have a much bigger budget, and we just didn't have that big of a budget to pull out. So the numbers are specific to New York State, the county, and then our two cities. So kind of a first step in the process was looking at our existing conditions and underst- understanding the demographics and population. You know, for housing, it's really understand, really important to understand those population trends. And we looked at that based on five-year projections from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty seven. As you can see, in Jamestown, you're seeing a decrease from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty seven. Not drastic, but a small decrease, one point four percent from the twenty twenty, or twenty eight thousand three hundred forty to the twenty seven thousand. In households, you are also seeing a reduction.
Rebecca, sorry to interrupt, your slide didn't change. Oh, there we go.
Oh, no.
There we go, now it's changed. Sorry, go ahead, sorry to interrupt, okay.
No, that's good to know. All right, thank you. As far as households, you can see from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty seven, there was a slight change, but not much. Only a point four percent in reduction of that projected household decrease. That's remaining pretty neutral. For average household size, this really isn't much of a surprise. We're seeing it roughly at two point two one people per household and projected to be two point one eight in Jamestown. I mean, ultimately, it's, people aren't having as large of families anymore. But that's really important to think about when thinking about housing in general, the needs for owner occupied and rental housing in our communities. And then we have an older population as well, so that means smaller housing, smaller households also. You know, you have a lot of more empty nesters, so it's gonna be a smaller household size. And then thinking about that median age, like I said, the, uh, older population. In Chautauqua County, we have an average, uh, median age of forty three, and in Jamestown, it's about thirty eight to thirty nine. The projection is that we are gonna be getting a little older in that median age from thirty eight to thirty nine in Jamestown. And then lastly, really important is that daytime population, and I think it's super important to note Jamestown's numbers. So your total population of twenty eight thousand three forty in the daytime gets that commuter population of almost four thousand people. And so when you're thinking about that, you're thinking, how can we attract those people to wanna live, work, and play in our community? How do we create new housing and improve our existing housing to make people wanna come live here? Income and poverty was another demographic we looked at, and that's very important when you're thinking about, uh, owner occupied and rental housing. The median household income in Jamestown is thirty three thousand six hundred and twenty six dollars, with a projection to rise to thirty seven thousand, roughly, a ten percent increase. But i- it's, it's a high poverty level. Twenty four percent in Jamestown in relationship to New York State's whole thirteen percent, or Chautauqua County seventeen percent. So, you know, that twenty four percent of households below the poverty level, when we start to talk about different housing types and what we wanna see in our communities, how do you create equitable, affordable, and safe housing for your low-income poverty population as well? Demographics for special populations was a concentration that we focused on. It's really important to think about that fifty five-plus population. In Jamestown, you have a population of thirty one point one percent, with it projected to go up a little bit higher in five years to that thirty one point five percent. But when you think about senior housing, you think about the type of housing stock that Jamestown has, those older, bigger homes. As you get older, you don't wanna, i- it's harder to maintain those homes. So thinking about creating new senior housing so that the newer families can get in and, and, uh, improve those larger houses and put some effort into, uh, really maintaining and improving the neighborhoods is something to think about. Households with disabilities, this stands out as well for Jamestown. Almost thirty three percent of your households have someone in there with a disability. So when you're thinking about improving your housing stock, how does that relate to people with disabilities? Is their current household helping them or hurting them? You know, could there be room for improvement on, on really creating new housing stock that focuses on households with disabilities? And then lastly, single-headed households with children under eighteen is a statistic that, you know, a special population we really wanted to focus on. You can see in the city of Jamestown, ten point five percent of those households, or one thousand two hundred ninety four people, or households have a single head with children under eighteen. And how do you, again, create that affordable, safe, and equitable housing for that population? In addition to those demographics, occupancy status and tenure is really important. When you think about your housing units in the city of Jamestown, there's fourteen thousand four hundred thirty total units. Out of that, eighty seven percent is occupied. And then we wanted to further look at the owner and renter occupations. So forty four percent is owner occupied, while forty two point nine or forty three percent is renter occupied. And the big number there is your vacancy rates. And what really stood out is you can see in that vacant housing units by status, we break down what vacancy really looks like, but one piece that really stood out is that other vacant number. So out of that thirteen point one percent, you have, um, the, the percentage of that is sixty five point eight percent other vacant. So what does that mean? It really refers to vacancy reasons other than that, other than those otherwise identified. According to the Census Bureau, most common reasons is owners do not wanna sell or rent. They are using it for a possible storage units. Some are living in nursing homes or with families. This category also captures units that are being held by settlements of an estate or being repaired or renovated, as well as some foreclosures. So that's something to keep in mind when you're thinking about your vacant units in Jamestown. As you can see, Chautauqua County has a large vacancy as well, but really, that what stands out in those terms is that seasonal recreational, uh, occasional uses. And when you think about the lakes, that, that, uh, the homes surrounding that really account for a lot of that percentage. We also wanted to look at and understand the real estate activity for single-family homes and multifamily homes. As you can, uh, I, I apologize, I don't have the breakout specific for Jamestown and for Dunkirk specifically for this one. But we did look at Chautauqua County, and it's no surprise here, again, when you look at the homes for sale in twenty eighteen versus the supply that we had in twenty twenty two, there's a drastic decrease. You know, it, the supply is short, but the demand is high, so that ups the median sales price. As you can see, that's gone up by sixty one point four percent between twenty eighteen to twenty twenty two. If you take a deeper dive into that twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two number, it's, again, very significant that homes for sale are, are decreasing while that value and median sales price is going up. And then looking at multifamily units, like I mentioned, we also wanted to understand that real estate activity as well. I have a couple charts here that kind of show the absorption, net deliveries, and vacancies, and I just wanted to kind of go over what that means. So absorption refers to the amount of space that becomes occupied in a market over a specific period of time. Net deliveries really represents the newly constructed spaces added to the market during that time, and then vacancy is a percentage of available space that's not currently occupied. You know, indicating the difference in the supply and demand in the market is really what we're looking at here when you look at multifamily homes. That high vacancy suggests a weak market with excess available space. And it's really crucial in assessing the overall health of our multifamily real estate. So when we're thinking about supply and demand in that multifamily area, you can see there's a forecast of a higher vacancy rate, but we're not having net deliveries come in, uh, which isn't very great. This chart kind of just brings it all together. Ultimately, we haven't seen much movement in the multifamily housing units, new, new privately owned developments. So back in twenty seventeen, we saw some units come on, new positive, uh, positive growth in, in those multifamily housing units. And then we've seen some significant single-family housing units, but the need for rental, for quality, affordable rental housing is huge throughout the county and the city of Jamestown and Dunkirk. So once we pulled all kind of that, uh, demographic data together, we also looked at, well, what are the needs, what type of housing is needed? So through our needs assessment, we looked at the cost burden on, um, on our homeowners, and thinking about getting back to affordability, what does being cost burden mean? Well, being cost burden means spending more than thirty percent of a household's income on housing costs and utilities. Housing and utility expenses exceeding this amount restrict a family's ability to accommodate other costs of living, such as healthcare, childcare, transportation, and education. And when you look at kind of this graph, I, I like to point out, you know, cost burdened households in Jamestown out of total occupied households make up thirty five point six percent. But then when you look down further at cost burden, households that are owner occupied, you see about sixteen point seven percent. I- it's close to the county's average, actually, exactly. But then you look down at the cost burden renter occupied households, and almost fifty four percent of your households that are renters are cost burdened. So, you know, they're barely getting by with the monthly housing expenditure, and that, that's a tough pill to swallow. And how do we, how do we change that projection is really something we have to think about. It was also important to think about what our current housing is looking like and what type of units are obsolete units. So, uh, based on some calculations that our consultants did, in Jamestown, about one point six percent of our current housing, or rental housing, those units are obsolete. This kind of brings home some additional needs assessments. It's hard to see in this kind of map, but in Jamestown, there are block groups where population is increasing and some that is in decline. And it's important to note, you know, where do you find those neighborhoods that are on the cusp of turning? Well, I like to think of a neighborhood that's in great condition, almost as a green neighborhood. You have those neighborhoods that are on the cusp of, uh, you know, you have a few problem properties on the street, but still a great street, those are kind of your orange neighborhoods. And then you have those neighborhoods that are really, really big problem properties, uh, really challenging neighborhoods that are kind of those red neighborhoods. Sometimes I think it's important to focus on those orange neighborhoods, because if you can get to a few of those properties and turn it green, you know, you're making a bigger impact, and those surrounding neighborhoods might see that and might invest in their homes. So thinking about the needs there and, and what our current housing stock looks like and what our current neighborhoods look like is really important. And again, back to our aging population, when we think about needs, uh, we think about what kind of senior housing we might need. So we had our consultants kind of project out if there was a need for more senior housing. And in Jamestown, the answer was yes. Ultimately, there's a projected in, uh, there's a projection of an increase in sixty five-plus population of about three hundred and thirty two people within the next five years, uh, or, or by twenty twenty seven, I should say. And our market suggests that it could support one hundred and twenty one single-family units as well as seventy eight rental units for senior housing. And, and what that means is that that could possibly free up some of these bigger homes that younger families are looking to invest in. And so, uh, you know, it's important to note that when a developer is interested in an area, that we can show him these numbers and show him the need. Homelessness is a big piece, and, and I apologize that I don't have Jamestown and Dunkirk's numbers pulled out. But ultimately, um, there's, there's a major increase in homelessness in Chautauqua County.
Oh, oh boy.
E? Sorry.
Sorry, we lost you there for a second. Yeah, we can hear you, yeah.
Okay, okay. And that totally literally homeless is over eight hundred based on our, um, based on the data. And then it, it's obviously very important to correlate, you know, homelessness to the corresponding conditions. So mental health disorder has increased, chronic health conditions have increased, physical disabilities. How do we bring the right people together to create more housing, but also have supportive services there to help those people through their hard times as well? I don't know. Is this changing? Oh. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Sorry, my. Come on. Okay. I guess skip the part. So that was a lot of data ga- gathering. Ultimately, we also knew that it was really important to get that anecdotal information as well. So we wanted to have different interviews with key stakeholder agencies. We talked to mayors and supervisors throughout the county. We also wanted to get the developers' input, what do they need when they come into a municipality? What incentives can we bring to them to help make a project a reality? So our stakeholder interviews inform the direction and priorities of strategies and goals that we laid out in our matrix. And kind of based on this, we were able to identify kind of four different goal areas. Those include housing diversity and quality, housing for special populations, reducing our cost burden on our renters and homeowners, and land management tools and resources. In goal one, we really look at creating an environment for Chautauqua County residents that have access to diversity of quality housing options that contribute to community vibrancy. And based on this goal, we identified strategies and actions, and this is just summarized, because we identified over eighty, um, action items. So specific to this goal area, we have aging housing stock issues such as lead deterioration. we have aging housing stock issues such as lead deterioration, deficiencies, looking at finding new housing to bring into municipalities, and looking at infill development, adaptive reuse, and properties that could be new housing developments. And then looking at more rental housing and tenant support as well. Sorry, Mike. Computer is running so awesome. Okay. Goal two is including appropriate housing and supports for all residents, including seniors, individuals with disabilities, and those that are homeless or housing vulnerable. So specifically looking at action items that develop additional housing products for seniors, housing for individuals with disabilities, and expanding programming and opportunities for housing insecure and homeless with a focus particularly on families. Goal three was creating an environment where residents of Chautauqua County are not spending more than thirty percent of their household income on housing costs. You know, ultimately, the goal here is reducing the number of cost burden residents. We want to create workforce housing that really focuses on sixty to one hundred and twenty percent of that area median income, low and moderate income individuals and families, so that thirty to sixty percent area median income, and then educating the public about the meaning of affordable housing. You know, it's so important for people to understand that there, that there's a spectrum of housing options when it comes to affordability, that you can have homeless energy, emergency shelters, you can have transitional housing, you can have supportive housing, you can have affordable rental housing, workforce housing, market rate housing and market homeownership housing as well. And that can all fit under the means of affordability. When you think about people who are cost burden in our county, they're your everyday people that you work with every single day. They are, they are our barbers, our entry level teachers, our childcare providers, paramedics and ETMs, the elderly, veterans, social workers, probation officers. And really, it's so important to create that spectrum of safe, affordable housing for everyone. You know, that's how our communities thrive is when you can have multiple different types of housing that's affordable and safe and equitable and accessible for all. Last goal area, sorry. Delay. And finally, goal four. Creating, promoting and making sure that land management tools and other resources are in place to create and improve the quality of and access to housing for all residents. So it's really looking at identifying and developing resources to address code compliance and quality, creating and facilitating, promoting pathways to homeownership, and helping our municipalities update comprehensive plans, zoning, tax laws and policies to address housing development. At the county side of things, we're really trying to help municipalities gain that pro-housing certification that New York State has through Homes and Community Renewal, ultimately, and able to access grant funding. You really have to be a certified pro-housing community. I know Jamestown is one of them. And then hoping that, how can we be improving our code enforcement? We, in twenty twenty-three, did a countywide code enforcement study, and we're looking at kind of a phase two of that, on focusing on a possibility of like a countywide housing court and what that might look like. So we haven't started that yet, but that might be a possibility. Kind of one of the recommendations within our strategy. One more slide, bear with me. So implementation. Ultimately, like I mentioned, there's over eighty specific action items in our strategy that we've kind of indicated or given rankings to based on short-term, midterm and long-term actions. And we've also identified kind of who the key stakeholders or leaders in the project should be, as well as what partners should be involved as well. You know, we can't do this on our own. Municipalities can't do it on their own. We each have to come at it at a different angle in improving our current housing stock and bringing in new housing stock and improving, you know, affordability and improving the market for all, really. We've kind of prioritized our top nine countywide actions as well as the partnership actions. But we are working on five specifically right now. Those include developing a, developing housing marketing materials for developers. So basically condensing this whole strategy down into a couple pages with key data points that they're looking for so they can easily flip through it, as well as having a section where we can easily plug and play like potential sites for housing developments and being able to market that or send that out to developers. We're also identifying a housing inventory of sites that are either vacant or sites that are good for infill projects. We're also identifying sites that are between one to five acres and ten plus acres that might make sense for a good housing development. We're actually working with the city. I know we have a meeting with Ellen this week, actually, to look at a possible development forum and bringing developers to the county, having a few sites in mind to show them, talk about what kind of incentives we can bring to the table to try to help their project move forward. We're also putting together an affordable housing fact sheet for municipalities and for mayors and supervisors to kind of hand out when talking about affordable, what it means to have affordable housing in your community. And then talking about promoting and helping municipalities with that pro-housing certification through New York State HCR, as I mentioned before. And I wanted to put a link to the full study. If you have some time on your hands and want to dive into that more and read through that, please do so. My contact information is here as well. You know, it's not all doom and gloom. We need to do a lot of work to improve our housing in Chautauqua County, but we are seeing progress with quite a few housing developments. I just, you know, I wrote down quickly which ones we're currently working on. We are working with Stella Silver Creek Schools, which is a fifty-four unit project in Silver Creek, the Gateway Lofts, as you all know, which is one hundred and ten unit project, the Welch's Building in Westfield, which is a forty-five unit project, the Macaroni Building and Bank Building, which are both mixed use projects in Dunkirk. We're still working, trying to get a developer, working on a multifamily development in Faulkner on the Main Street. Regan Development is a seventy-eight unit multifamily project on two sites in Dunkirk. And then School Ten and Marsh Valve Site, they're two sites that are looking at multifamily units for senior and, senior and mixed income housing in Dunkirk. So again, not all doom and gloom. We have some good stuff on the horizon and will continue to work to try to make those realities. So thank you, thank you for having me. I'll open up for questions now.
Could you go back to the income slide?
Are you able to go back to the income slide?
Oh, darn it. Yes, I'm sure I can, yes, give me a minute. Course.
I have a question while you're trying to relocate that slide. What do you attribute most of the development in the North County to as opposed to the Jamestown? I only heard one, one area in Faulkner that is being looked at. Everything else seems to be Dunkirk, Silver Creek and those areas.
Well, I know that Dunkirk's recent DRI, Dunkirk's recent DRI had a lot to do with bringing in some developers currently. So, you know, that ten million dollar investment is, some of that ten million is going towards a couple of those projects. Silver Creek, I think that there's interest maybe in a proximity to Buffalo area. That might be a reasoning. I know Gateway Lofts is one in Jamestown that Stella is working on. And then, you know, I, I don't think that, those are the ones that I'm aware of. I'm the planning side of things, so there could be some more in the works with the IDA in Jamestown as well. But those are the ones that currently I'm aware of. Was it the slide?
No, I think it was slide six or eight, somewhere in there. I'm just trying to figure out the correlation. It had like median income, household income.
Yes, okay.
We accidentally skipped over it or it froze during that time.
Right. Went from five to seven.
Yeah, so I think it must have been six.
So maybe slide six.
Okay. Let me try to get to it, sorry.
But I guess I was just trying to understand the connection between the rental household, is that rental household unit income? Is that what's at fifty percent? Or was it just broken down by household income? Or, because you said fifty percent of them are at cost burden. Sorry?
Yes, I know which one you're talking about.
And so I just wanted to see that, the actual dollar numbers there for what the household income was.
Yeah, sorry, I'm trying to get to it. Doesn't want to show it, does it?
Listen, does anyone else have any questions while she's?
Oh yeah, I have a question about, you mentioned to, we need to educate the public about the meaning of affordable housing.
Yeah. I think that a lot of people get confused with affordable housing in regards to Section Eight housing. And affordable housing is not Section Eight. I think that's important to understand that, you know, that's, we have a large percentage of people in our, in our county that are cost burden and that are our everyday people that we work with, you know, or that we interact with on a day-to-day basis. And, you know, I think that there's a thought that, oh, you know, that affordable housing is someone that doesn't have a job and can't, you know, but it isn't. It's our, like I said, our childcare providers, our, our barbers, our, you know, paramedics, our, you know, our veterans, our elderly, you know, that are also cost burdened. So understanding that there are affordable housing options at various income levels is really important to understand, I believe. That, that makes sense. I'm sorry, I don't know why this is not letting me show.
And then Rebecca, in regards to site selection and municipality supplying potential build sites, is that going to be available to all developers and municipalities on a centralized database? Or how will that be rolled out and marketed to potential housing developers?
Can you say that again? Sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
You might have to get off the road a little bit. Because it's just that little microphone over there.
Yeah, Rebecca, regarding the site selection information that you presented, I know that municipalities are going to be supplying, you know, the county with potential housing development sites, et cetera, one to five acres, five acres plus. Will there be a centralized database that this will be shareable? And how is that going to be marketed to potential housing developers?
Yeah, we currently have an internal kind of inventory list going right now, but I think that's a great idea to have it shareable for all municipalities. You know, we're kind of doing our first steps of homework and going through each forty-two and kind of identifying projects that kind of fit those, those parameters that I was talking about, a little bit of what's underutilized vacant sites that kind of stand out. We're kind of taking a first stab at that, but then we're going to be working and reaching out to all the municipalities, meeting with, you know, Ellen Crystal to review that list, add to that list. You know, Vince at the city of Dunkirk and then mayors and supervisors, they have a chance to go through that list. You know, probably code enforcement officers would be a good one as well because they are underground every day seeing it. Land Bank, Gina Paritas is going to be very involved in that process as well. And then our housing work group through C-Pay will get a chance to review the inventory. And then also local realtors, they have an eye on the market, obviously. They were a part of this strategy as well. That was one that I failed to mention, but we did interview local realtors also. So they will be a part of that process. Haven't thought about how we're going to share that yet, but the partnership has a website, so we could possibly make that live there. And then ultimately, we've got a pretty good housing developer list going right now. So our idea is to put together that housing marketing packet that I talked about and do some cold calls, do some emailing, do some mailing, you know, get some interactions with some of these housing developers that are doing some big housing projects in the Hamburg, South Towns areas, you know, Pennsylvania, Erie, you know, why not Chautauqua County, you know? So it's important that we kind of establish a good list and reach out to those different developers.
Fantastic, thank you. And I know that the cities of the county are particularly at risk because we're very, very, our land is used as limited. We have very limited, you know, site potential other than, you know, perhaps many one-off, single family sites. Is there any, any thought of giving priority or to the cities of the county when it comes to a housing developer that might be interested in putting in a development? Because it's much cheaper to build on a green, green site than it is when inside of a city proper?
Yeah, I definitely think that there's different housing developers that are more in tune with utilizing some of those specific brownfield cleanup credits and working on, you know, adaptive reuse projects, accessing historic tax credits that we'll reach out to and work with and try to prioritize, you know, their focus on working on the cities and potentially working with them on what incentives we can bring to the table as well. You know, my boss Mark Geis kind of always calls us the Goldilocks. You know, my, my boss Mark Geis kind of always calls us the Goldilocks County because he sees it as, you know, we're not so big that we have so much, like, we can't spend time on a project, we have so much going on. But we're not so small that we don't have the resources that we can bring to the table or the grant writing, you know, we don't, that we don't have grant writing experience that we can't sit down with the developer to understand what kind of incentives he needs. You know, we're kind of that middle ground. We, we will work with them, we'll get those, but we'll work on the grants and opportunities out there, um, him or her. And, uh, I, I think that that says a lot, um, to a developer when we can really, uh, spend the time working with them to get those incentives and really bring it to the table and bring it home. I don't know if I answered your question, I'm sorry.
Yes, it did, yes, it did. Thank you, Rebecca.
Okay, okay, yeah, no problem.
Anyone else have any questions?
Not a question, but one of the things that I liked in what you're saying is that there's been, in essence, a broad look at the problems with housing. And I know that I've, I've been in, I'm in that business with housing, and one of the biggest problems that usually comes up is that the, the tenant or the potential different owner, that it's, uh, is where does the money come from? Because the cost of this stuff is usually well beyond the ability of the person, whether they be elderly or younger, they don't have the amount of cash, or there's got to be something else backing it up. And I didn't hear you mention anything about that kind of a problem.
Yeah, I mean, uh, I, I think it definitely kind of plays into that cost burden piece. So, you know, if, if you're cost burden, you don't have the opportunity or funds to invest back into your rental or into your owner, your, your home or your rental unit, you know, I, I think that's... It, it's a challenge. I don't have an answer, to be honest. I wish, I wish I did, yeah, it's a huge challenge. I, I hundred percent agree.
I've dealt with it a couple of times, I know what it's like. It's not easy. So, but what yours talking about though is very important, and I know that from, I'm looking at it in a kind of wishful way, but if there's one thing that I've found over the years with housing, is that it's so important, I think, because of the thing that we did here in Jamestown, it is so important and it works so well if the children are able to live in a single-family home, maybe small and so on, but it's a family home, nobody else is living above them or below them, and they are in a, near a neighborhood where kids live and live with their parents in single houses, single-family houses. That inner working with their kids has proven to be good as far as their school abilities and how they treat others as they get older and they're more confident going forward. So, I can't get just stats on it, it's just things that we've learned somewhat here in the city in Jamestown, and, uh, I'd encourage you to try to work in that direction while you're going. The biggest thing you need is a good outcome for the continuing life of the people and the kids.
I agree. I think homeownership is really key, um, uh, for, not for everyone, but for a lot of people. And I, yeah, I, I agree that kind of educating and creating opportunities for that single-family, um, household with, with the children, I, I hundred percent agree, it is huge.
Yeah. Did anyone else have any questions? All right. Rebecca, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm, I, I think I sent you, Ellen, the presentation, so you're more than welcome to share that with everyone, and, uh, thanks again for the opportunity to present. I apologize for not being there in person, but thank you.
I think you're having the information too on people is good. All right. No, no should be left out.
Okay.
Okay. And then we don't have any items for new business? Does anyone else have, have anything?
Only thing I've mentioned is, uh, I think next, is it next Thursday, BP was having a, uh, having a session on the microgrid system. Public's invited to?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, right here in this, in this room.
Five thirty.
Five thirty here on the...
And, you know, the opportunity to, uh, to feed and, uh, if you're gonna stay at home.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
And it'll just be talking about the basics of the microgrid grid.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, nothing else?
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.